And come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, and as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil, for thine is the kingdom, with power and glory, forever and ever. Amen. The allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item C is approval of minutes. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the minutes shall stand approved from July 13th, 2019, special council meeting minutes, and July 15th, 2019, regular council meeting Hearing none, they stand approved. Item D is citizen communication. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address council that on anything that is not on the agenda? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to item E is swearing in our new city finance director. Kelly?
(inaudible) (inaudible) I solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Ohio and the charter of this city, now faithfully discharged according to law and the best of my ability, the duties of finance director to which I have been appointed.
Hold on, hold on, no, no, no.
Did you say to sign to this speech?
I did not, no. Are you good? Brian, are you good? You good? Did you take a picture? Did you own one? No?
Well, we can give you the floor for a few minutes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Tell everybody about yourself if you'd like, and introduce any audience you may have.
Thank you, it's an honor to be appointed. I came from, I have 18 years of government experience in finance and operations. I have a master's degree from the University of Toledo. I came from Lucas County for 15 years, I worked for the private sector for two years, and I recently worked for Wood County as assistant county administrator. My husband of five years has been in the audience.
Hi, husband of five years.
And I look forward to working with the audience.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Come on here and shake his hand. Give him a little welcome.
You're welcome.
Have fun working with us.
That sounds ominous.
She's gonna run away already.
Okay, moving on to item F, reports from council committees. The Finance and Budget Committee did not meet on July 22nd due to lack of agenda items, and Safety and Human Resources Committee met on July 22nd, 2019.
Yeah, we did meet on the 22nd of July and had considerable discussion on two issues, golf carts on city streets and the cat issue, and after considerable discussion, we did not make any recommendation. We wanted to refer to the whole council for additional discussion later tonight.
Thank you, Dan. And F3 is Technologies and Communication Committee did not meet earlier tonight due to lack of agenda items. Moving on to item H is introduction of new ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance number 050-19, an ordinance approving current May 2019 replacement pages to the City of Napoleon codified ordinances. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Council President. As we do semi-annually every year, the Walter Drain Company goes through our codified ordinances and updates them to meet any changes that we've had in our ordinances and state law.
And it's both this time. You always ask that question, you always ask which one it is, and it's both this time. So, changes from the state and changes from our own legislation.
If I'm not mistaken, they actually highlighted all of the...
Yeah, they are highlighted in there, so it's very helpful.
In the last two years they haven't, so I think we pushed them enough to actually give us an edited version.
Was there anything that jumped out at you guys at all that you had concerns with at all?
Not particularly, no.
There's a lot of talk about electric bikes, though.
Yeah.
Electric bicycles.
It's been there a few times.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie?
Yes.
Jeffy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeffon?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Moving on to item H2, ordinance number 051-19. Ordinance approving an ODOT resurfacing project from the corporation line of Holgate to the Mahoney River Bridge in Napoleon, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Hey, Joel?
Thank you. When ODOT does work inside of the city limits, they require, typically they require a ordinance be passed by city council, allowing them to be in our jurisdiction and do the work that they're going to do. Next year, they have a project planned to resurface 108 from Holgate to the River Bridge. This is a requirement to allow ODOT to work from the city corp limit to the River Bridge on 108. Projects will, project will probably be, most likely be big later, late this year or early next year, and work to be completed next year. We do have suspension requested. As of right now, I don't know how the project is going to shake out in terms of which portion inside of the city limits that ODOT's going to pay for and which portion that we're going to be required to pay for. So, other than that, this ordinance only allows, is only authorizing ODOT to do that work inside of the city limits. Details of the project cost will come out later, and any allocations will need to be appropriated either by separate legislation or in the new budget cycle.
Great. Do we have a motion for suspension?
So moved.
Second. Hey Rox, please call the roll on suspension.
Laurie?
Yes.
Jeffy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeffon?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Rox, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Laurie?
Yes.
Jeffy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeffon?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Okay, that is passed with suspension under first read. Okay, moving on to item I, second reads of ordinances and resolution. Ordinance number 047-19, a resolution authorizing the finance director to transfer certain fund balances, transfer number three from respective funds to other funds per section 5705.14 ORC on an as-needed basis in fiscal year 2019, listed in Exhibit A, and declaring an emergency. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Joel?
Thank you, Council President. This is the second, the first of two ordinances for the second quarter budget adjustment. As we discussed in the Finance and Budget Committee and at the previous two council meetings, the committee recommended approval of the budget adjustments that you see before you, so nothing has changed. The last council meeting, three weeks ago, we talked about this. We didn't suspend, do suspension because there was a lack of a number of council members present to be able to do that, so it was approved on first read requesting suspension on second.
Make motion for suspension.
Second.
Hey Rox, please call the roll on suspension.
Laurie?
Yes.
Jeffy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeffon?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Hey Rox, please call the roll on the resolution.
Laurie?
Yes.
Jeffy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeffon?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Okay, that is passed on second read under suspension. Moving on to item I2, ordinance number 048-19, an ordinance supplementing the annual appropriation member measure supplement number four for the year 2019 and declaring an emergency. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Joel?
Thank you, Council President. This is the companion legislation for the second quarter budget adjustment, same as before requesting suspension. We weren't allowed to pass it under suspension at the last meeting.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Rox, please call the roll on suspension.
Laurie?
Yes.
Jeffy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeffon?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Okay, any questions or comments on this ordinance? Okay, Rox, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Laurie?
Yes.
Jeffy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeffon?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Okay, that is passed on second read under suspension. Moving on to item I3, resolution number 049-19, an ordinance authorizing the expenditure of funds over $25,000 and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Jones &amp; Henry Engineering LTD for the purpose of professional design services for the project known as wastewater treatment plant Phase 1 improvement project, which was not included in the 2019 appropriation budget, also authorizing supplementing the annual appropriation measure supplement number five for the year 2019 and declaring an emergency. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Joel?
Thank you. As we discussed in several previous council meetings and committee meetings, we're seeking to get Jones &amp; Henry under contract right now to help plan and design some of the phases of the rehabilitation of the wastewater treatment plant. Suspension again is requested on this item, we weren't able to do it at the last meeting. Any, any, by not, I guess, there is a reason why this one suspension is requested, not like there is on any of the other ones, but this one in particular is of significant importance due to any delays, just, you know, short and long-term decisions are delayed as a result of not being able to sign this contract sooner. And it's very important because of the, the operations of the wastewater plant are significantly affected by the amount of solids that are now coming from the water treatment plant, so something that we need to address, both short-term and long-term. It's very important, and later on, I'll request that we refer something to the Water and Sewer Committee meeting for September to give us enough time to prepare, have Jones &amp; Henry on board to kind of talk about some of the, some of the things that are happening at the, at the plant, so requesting suspension on this legislation as well.
Motion for suspension.
Second.
Hey Rox, please call the roll on suspension.
Laurie?
Yes.
Jeffy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeffon?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, Rox, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Laurie?
Yes.
Jeffy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeffon?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Okay, that also is passed on second read under suspension. Moving on to item J, third read of ordinances and resolution. J1 is ordinance, or resolution number 043-19, a resolution authorizing the approval and execution of the Napoleon Area School District Campus Improvement Agreement. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay, Joel?
Thank you, Council President. This is the third and final read on this agreement. The school board did pass it in their last school board meeting late last month. I did speak with the new school superintendent today, Eric Belcher, and he and I are going to meet to kind of talk about some of the particulars with this particular agreement, along with some other projects that are going on in the median area of the Claremine Avenue reconstruction and some of the vacant land in that general vicinity, so, you know, hopefully that, that all can be improved as well, so nothing new to report on this, on this agreement.
Great. Anybody have any questions or comments?
None.
I just want to thank Joel for your hard work with this. I know there's been some unpleasant history that happened not too long ago, and you've kind of bridged the gap between the city and the schools, and it's definitely needed for, for this community. I think it's great that you've been working on that, so thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Do you realize this has been going on for six years now? I can't believe it.
I can.
Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie?
Yes.
Jeffy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeffon?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Okay, that is passed on third read. Okay, moving on to item K, Good of the City. K1 is discussion action, golf carts on city streets.
Okay, thank you, Council President. Golf carts in city streets was discussed at the Safety and Human Resources Committee meeting. There was quite a discussion, I know Billy, you and Chief Mackin spoke quite a bit about the state law change in 2017, state law changed and allowed for golf carts to be driven on city streets, 35 miles an hour or under, as long as it was inspected by law enforcement sheriff's office as of right now, and so that means a working horn, lights, I'm looking at you, Councilman Bear, turn signals, you know, and...
And license plate.
And a license plate, right, of course. And needs an inspection and you got to get a license plate. And I believe this was, this was brought about as somebody had gotten a license plate for a golf cart at the BMV.
Correct.
So, that's what kind of prompted the conversation. We had a, let's say, robust conversation about the different concerns, things that are associated with having, and it's not just golf carts, I believe the term is actually slow-moving vehicles.
It's under-speed vehicles. There are a couple of different terms for a couple of different types of vehicles, but golf carts, most golf carts would fit under the under-speed or low-speed definition.
Hence the 35 miles an hour and under. So, but the committee discussed it, and, you know, I think the, some of the discussion was about, you know, concerns over under-speed vehicles on Scott Street, that was a big one. And then if council would want to allow under-speed vehicles just on roads that are 25 miles an hour, what impact that would have, you know, that would basically cut the south side off from being able to go over the, the River Bridge. I mean, there's, there's different variations, and Billy, correct me if I'm wrong, but there could be any number of ways to enact something that would, that would allow them on city streets, i.e. allowing golf carts out as it stated in the state law, and maybe carve out pieces that where there would be some concern, such as Scott Street or other roads that, that may be of concern. So, those were just some of the items that, that were discussed. Councilman Bear, you're the committee chair, I didn't know if you wanted to add anything.
Basically, the, you know, the police chief pointed out concerns of chopping up, you know, sections of the city.
Right.
And just, you know, not just the south side coming over, but like the areas off of Jan's Road not being able to come the other direction, so, and if we needed to section off certain parts of the city, or if, if not. And the other issue was, so far, there had not been any request, per se, for the use of golf carts on city streets. So, one thing that was discussed was maybe we want to wait until we actually get some requests from the citizens to have this.
Right.
And, you know, the chief was concerned about, you know, the safety of the slow-moving vehicles, especially on Scott Street and the other 35 mile an hour streets in the city.
I'm sorry, Billy, I didn't...
No, that's fine, I can wait my turn.
Okay.
No, so revised code 4511, 214 and 215 authorize municipalities to allow this to happen. As it stands, there is not any authorized under-speed golf cart style driving on city streets. If the city were to take action to pass legislation and add it to our ordinances to allow such vehicles on the road, the city is authorized by these two code sections to do so. Short of that, there's nothing, nothing needs to be, nothing needs to take place necessarily unless you wanted to make it explicit to disallow golf carts on city streets. But if you were to want to permit, you can follow state code, we can revise to, and I've drafted up something, just real brief, if you wanted to draft something to say that golf carts could be on city streets 25 and under, certainly you can do that. You can make other exceptions as well if council wanted to discuss this and comes up with other ideas. I simply drafted something based on a couple of different municipalities who had allowed this but decided to keep it under 25, and so on, but as it stands now, no golf carts or under-speed vehicles on city streets unless this council takes action to allow it, and then we'll have to talk about what rules council might want to impose if it were to allow these vehicles on the road.
So if we were to do the 25 and under, somebody that lives on the south side would not be able to cross the bridge to...
There are a number of little pockets that would be created.
Because of 35 on the bridge.
Yeah.
I don't understand that, because you have the sidewalk, which is separated from the roadway by a barrier, there would be no problem with them coming across the bridge.
So if, the golf carts, the vehicles would not be driving on the sidewalks, they'd have to stay on the roads. If they're gonna, if you're gonna drive a golf cart in the city and you, and let's say for some reason we decided to allow 35 miles per hour and under, that person would be required to take the bridge as a normal vehicle would. If we made it 25, then golf carts or under-speed vehicles would not be allowed to cross the bridge, and there would be a number of roads within the city that the golf carts would not be allowed to drive on. So it would create these tiny pockets this way, tiny pockets over by the school, tiny pockets over, you know, north and south, south of the bridge, and it was, so it would create an opportunity for local traffic perhaps, but it would not connect the city, the city entirely.
I was here when we made that they couldn't ride on the streets, and I'm still in that opinion of that. They were causing traffic issues before in that, and when they were going, because most time it was going between, you know, somebody's house and the golf course with them, and I still see it.
And there is a, there is a corral now of golf courts at the privately-owned golf carts at the golf course, they can be stored there, so.
Sure. Certainly there are safety concerns. If council did allow this, I would be, I would place bets on how quickly I get my first OVI case in a golf cart. You know, it's, it's, it's not up to me, but I know the police chief would voice some safety concerns if he were here, certainly I would. There are some issues that I don't think have been studied thoroughly, even in the cities that have allowed this. So, you know, that's, like I said, if council wants to take action to allow this, there are exceptions they could carve out. If council wants to do nothing, then golf carts remain off of city streets for now, with no action taken. If council wanted to make it explicit, certainly I could draft something up that would make it very explicit, hey, no thanks, kind of thing, that's really up to you.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that came here specifically to address this? If you could, please step up to the podium and go ahead and write down your name and email.
Address.
Address and...
I can't read lips, I'm sorry.
And then when you're finished with that, if you could introduce yourself to us.
My name is George Emery. I reside at Chelsea Avenue condo association. I represent the condo association, and it would be very, I think, beneficial for the passage of this ordinance to very, in a good way, allow us to have a golf cart to either go over to the golf course or whatever you, you feel would be appropriate in restrictions or whatever you want to determine, but also would be to, I for one would, would, would like to have a golf cart. I will have a golf cart if, if I am able to use it, but also to pick up a few ladies and take them around Chelsea Avenue. They would love that. They, they would love that. And, but anyway, so I am in, very much would like your support and see if you can find your way to give us that opportunity to do that.
Thank you, George, appreciate that.
Thank you for your time.
I have two questions based on what you said.
Yeah.
So you would get it licensed, you'd get those, get it inspected, is that correct, to drive it on the street?
Yes, I would.
Have lights? You would, okay. And then do you see yourself going outside of that 25 mile an hour area?
No, no.
It would just be for that?
No. If that's the law, I would do it.
Okay.
If that's what you prefer, that's what I'll do.
Okay.
I certainly want to, won't, won't do that anymore than what's allowed.
Isn't Glenwood in front of the golf course 35?
35.
No, it's 25.
What about bales?
Glenwood's off 25.
If you're coming out of bales. Even in front of the cemetery?
It's 25.
Yeah.
What if you're coming out of bales out of the neighborhood?
Yeah, I'd leave Chelsea Avenue, probably go directly across the street and get on the path, go down, probably go down to the, the service garage down there, cross the tracks and go in that way would, would be probably the, good access to the golf course.
You'd go on the bicycle path, is what you're saying?
Ah, I could avoid that by any getting onto the pa, getting onto the, the grass over there.
You could even take a look at just doing it for the, that one 35 mile an hour section of bales, too, for the neighborhood, if you wanted to get, because what you're saying is you would take it across the street onto the golf course, but these would need to stay on the street.
Yeah.
These would be street, the street legal golf course, the golf carts.
Well, it depends on the speed limit that you, that you come up with, I guess. Bales is 35.
I'm just going back to his, his point that he made earlier, these aren't, these aren't for paths, they're for, they're for the streets. If you want to see...
Yeah, I, I heard that, I, yeah, I did hear that, that's why I would not get on that... That's why I would not get on that bicycle path, if you want to call it that, or walking path.
Gotcha.
On the other side of Bales. Yeah, understand.
If you want to see a good example of why this would be a horrible idea, especially for that neighborhood, wait about two or three weeks at 3 o'clock when school lets out and at 7, 8 o'clock in the morning. And I know how 16 year olds drive, so I wouldn't want to be out there on it.
Well, there would not be a need to be on it. I would just wait until that, that period of congestion would, would ease.
Well, while I have no doubt that you might, the next person might not.
I would, I would hope, I think we have a pretty good community as far as I know. I just relocated here two years ago and I never seen so many people observe the stop sign as much as I've seen here.
There aren't that many.
I.
There aren't that many to do it.
Yeah.
Observe it?
Yeah.
No, well, I, I go down to the four-way stop down here at the end of Glenwood down there and never had a problem yet. They all observe your, who goes next? Yeah, I don't know. Maybe I caught them at a good time, I guess. But, yeah.
Yeah, I see your concerns and when we were talking in the committee, one area we were talking about, which is similar to what you're trying to say, is we were talking about the area around the senior center, the Loufran home and the new housing complex, that area out there allowing, not a per se, but if we would do this, having a pocket out there. I know Sandy, you're not in charge out there, but you don't want to say anything about that, okay?
No, no.
Not while she's here.
No, I, I do visit there once in a while.
Okay. But, I'm gonna say, those would be my concerns if we had it, would have to be in pocket areas and, you know, I'm, I don't always agree with Travis, but on the big highways, I'd be, I'm concerned on the major roads for sure. And that was one of the reasons, I think, the committee didn't make a decision. We were concerned on the major roads and the cutoff areas.
Well, I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Who's this stranger?
Could you state your name, please?
My name is Bob White, so I'm a citizen.
I'd like to throw in here, I've thought a lot about this, I've had a lot of years to think about this and I've had some life experiences that have brought me here tonight to make my comments here. But, Mr. President, can you tell me, are you just carving out golf carts or without passing an ordinance at all, you're also throwing out those utility vehicles that I think not too long ago, the city was even looking to buy.
What type of utility?
The side-by-side.
Those mini trucks.
Gators.
And the gators. I thought we were at one point looking to save money and costs by buying those for the operations and parks and rec and things like that. Would we be, wouldn't we be carving those out also with the golf carts? The state saw fit to throw golf carts in and classify them. Would we not, without passing anything, automatically rule out those other two utility-type vehicles?
Depends, I'd have to refer to.
So, a couple of, a couple of. Law Director. So there's no real mention of golf cart, obviously.
Right, it's the new classification.
It's all under the new classification, so what would fit in to certain definitions and what wouldn't? We'd have to look at the exact.
It seems to me that section has, Mr. Law Director, has three different.
If I remember correctly, yeah.
And two of, one of them is the utility vehicle, which I would, I classified, I thought in my mind right away, the gator.
Sure.
And then the other is the mini truck. All three of those are in that.
The under speed.
Section lumped together in that, in that under, not in the under speed, it's under speed in 14. Is it 14 or 15? It's, no, it's the allowance. It's 15, I believe, is where you're allowed to do it, but it's all three of those and it doesn't seem to be a situation where you can just carve out one and allow the other two. You have to either include them all or not include them all.
So the, if, my recollection of the, of the statute is that the city is authorized to draft as it sees fit regarding these.
If that's the case, then first of all, I would say we might not consider carving out the two utility vehicles that might be very helpful, licensed and operating in 25 and 35 mile an hour zones, not only to assist the city but other, you know, businesses. I wouldn't want to carve those out just because they threw golf carts in there, which is what the ruckus is right now. I, I don't get around much. I get around a lot more now because I'm retired, but I had an opportunity to go to Putin Bay. I don't know if any of you have ever been to Putin Bay, but that is the epitome of what can be crazy in a situation where it's a lot of entertainment, mixing golf carts driving on the streets with regular traffic. I was a bit hesitant when I went there the first time, so actually we'd been there once, went there, spent a day there and saw it work quite well under the situations that the state has outlined. I think that's what's bringing that to us at this point, expanding that situation. I think of myself as a motorcycle rider. I'm on a two-wheeled vehicle with no protection at all, no seatbelt, riding on the streets that you're talking about right now. Do I have to be real careful? Yeah, because not everybody follows the rules, not everybody stops at the signs, not everybody sees me as big as I am on a motorcycle. So I have to be very careful and I could be in a lot more trouble on two wheels than four wheels. I'm not so sure that we're not thinking about the worst and not allowing a natural progression to take place. We seem like as a city, we're trying to open up our doors to more entertainment value, to expand our horizons and without thinking about those things, I think we may be shutting our doors to some of these things. We're not causing an accident if we do this. We're going to follow the state laws, it'll be regulated, safety equipment, licensed drivers, all the rules have to be followed, insurance, nobody's been mentioned, the search, can't get a license without insurance, but the license plates, just like a motorcycle would be, but with the better restriction of only being on 25 and 35 mile an hour roads. I don't know that it's the worst thing in the world, I don't, I didn't like the idea a long time ago at all because the problem was, they just wanted us to allow it because there was no ability to license them. And I said, you know, when the state finally decides that it's, there's an ability to license them, then come back and talk to us again. Well, they've done it. I don't think it's necessarily the worst idea in the world to try and you can always repeal it. You can always repeal it, you can always take the 35 mile an hour zones out. As the law director says, you can carve out a street and if it just doesn't work on Scott Street, then it just doesn't work on Scott Street. But I'm of the opinion to give what the state is allowed to, to be addressed, to give the citizens as much leeway as possible within that framework and then let, let's see how it works. If it doesn't work very well, then we can deal with the aftermath. But if it works, I think that was the whole purpose of doing, passing that law. I'm interested though, if there's anyone in the audience or at council here tonight that can tell me what happened when they issued that person his, his license plates for his golf cart. Was he informed that he couldn't ride it? And then therefore, why did he even get the plates?
Right.
So.
He never asked.
Well, I, I guess, you're issuing him a license, he's got a pretty good assumption.
And I didn't know what the rules were at the time. If I would have known that, I probably would have advised him that, but I didn't know at the time.
So there's, you know, so there sure is a great deal of education that has to be done. I think Powell did a really good job with the forms that they came up with to educate the public when they go about this. I know for the, for a fact, the school is using one right now, unlicensed on the road out in that, in that area.
You get that grade?
Properly.
Careful.
You get that grade?
But.
They get mad.
Don't you think we should, they're using those utility vehicles too, they're using those gators, they're using, they're using those things. Why not let them do it appropriately, licensed, insured, operators that are also licensed? Because that's the important part, is to make sure that it's as safe as possible. That's just my open opinion from what I've seen in one instance, but I know that there are lots of people that visit there a lot more regularly than I do and I think that that's been a good experience as far as I'm concerned. I was sold on it the first, the first day. I said, this is working very well. People are working very, very easily and understanding with this. So that's, that's my opinion on this and I just wanted to say, appreciate you letting me say that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Bobby Citizen.
Do we have any information on how this has worked in similarly sized cities, similarly composed cities, perhaps more rural cities? I mean, Putin Bay is one thing, but, but, I mean, if we're gonna have an experiment, somebody else is already experimenting somewhere else in the state and I'd like to know how it's working for them.
Did you say Powell?
Powell, just.
Powell, Ohio?
Ten minutes of research, I got some information from Powell.
Yeah, that's a good.
I don't, I suppose I could.
That's a good, that's a good reference point at least. We've checked with ODOT on, on traffic data, accidents and things and there's just really not a whole lot.
You can't have my rest of the information.
Putin, Putin Bay also has very little car traffic on the roads there though, too. Once you get outside of that little square downtown.
It's more golf carts than cars.
Yeah, yeah.
I guess I'd like to kind of see how this has worked out and.
Road trip.
Road trip.
Just one more redo just before we go to the next.
No.
Real quick.
No.
Very soon, we're going to have a new bridge. I don't know when that'll be, here from now, two years from now, 10 years from now, it's irrelevant. We also no longer have a state highway, 420 or 424, it's a city street. The regulations on that street are ours to make now and there's no reason in the world why we can't discuss lowering those speeds, moving the truck traffic out of town, saving an awful lot of hazards to all motorists in town and put them out on that new bridge and that new overpass across the river and continue on their journeys. And then you're talking about changing speed limits, maybe out to Twin Oaks and out to Amity Way, Ankerstal, 35 and also to East. So I'm just saying, throwing that out there, those are your streets now, they're one state and one of us.
108 is still there.
108 is 108, but in town, 108 is regulated, it's 35 and 25.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hi, I'm Penny Bauschmann, the new executive director at Senior Center. Sandy Schlosser's here with me too. We're here to talk about one of those little pockets and only that little pocket. That's what we wanted to go on record to say that, you know, we're looking at this from the perspective of the senior center, our current participants and potential participants of the senior center. In our little exciting corner of, you know, southeastern Napoleon, we're on the verge of a new development, the nursing homes. I mean, Councilman Daniel there, you said half my spiel for me. The assisted living, the nursing home and within a half a mile, several senior households. So we're looking from that, you know, standpoint of our location. We believe the golf carts, golf cart allowance could be advantageous to both the seniors and the senior center, you know, by letting people get out and get some fresh air, saving on the gas of the little trips around, you know, our little portion there. The senior center would be willing to designate parking, you know, some, some parking spaces for that. You know, that's, you know, kind of what we're looking at there. I was excited to hear that. Joel is also a member of our, our board and, and our board seemed to be very supportive of this in our neighborhood. But that's where we wanted to go on record to say, we are talking about our pocket and how advantageous we think it could be for our pocket of Napoleon, but that's what we have. Did you have anything else to add or?
Nope.
We can't get Sandy to talk, can we?
Basically my chance, a couple months ago.
So that's, you know, just from our standpoint there, you know, I understand all the pros and the cons, but in our little neck of the woods, we think it would be very advantageous.
Thank you for taking the time to share. Yes, my opinion a little bit, I've been thinking about this since I, I wasn't able to make the, the meeting when it was first discussed and thought about it a lot recently. Wasn't sure which way I was leaning towards, but the more I think about it, the more I listen to different sides of it, first thing I think about is when we start talking about the Nora district and we started hearing a lot of people say, well, what if this happens? What if that happened? We're gonna have people walk down our streets at 1 o'clock in the afternoon, we're gonna see people drunk and carrying drinks and, and none of that has happened. And I kind of feel the same way with this. Why would we prevent something that could potentially be very good, like Bobby mentioned about, hey, we're trying to make this more of an entertainment city, trying to attract more people here. And I, I believe giving something like this a try is something that is worth doing and we would have the right to make adjustments afterwards as needed. Not to mention, most golf carts I've been on go a lot faster than bikes do and just the other day, I was on Scott Street and right in the center of the street, I'm following somebody on a, on a bike, riding their bike and following the laws, stopped at the, he was in the left turn lane because he was gonna turn left and I'm behind him and so bikes can do it, doesn't have a motor, why we wouldn't allow a motorized vehicle that could potentially go up to 30, 35 miles an hour?
You can pass a bicycle though, on the streets. You can't legally pass a golf cart.
Mr. Chairman, what I think I would like to recommend.
Off the top of my head, I don't know.
Is, I've got to sort of agree with our law director here and get a few more examples and maybe refer back to committee, the August committee meeting and then bring it back to the whole, the whole council at the first meeting in September. But I do agree, I think we need to see some other examples maybe before, I would be comfortable either way, I would like to see some other examples.
And I'll bring some draft legislation to that meeting as well, just so you can, you'll have it beforehand, so you can look at it and see what I'm talking about and maybe I'll print off some, some definitions so everybody knows exactly what we're talking about as to weight and speed of these vehicles, which vehicles would fit under each definition and so on. I think that would be important.
And I don't think there's no rush on this at this point. Jeff, Jeff, are you okay with?
Yes.
Yep.
I'm with you.
Okay, just do some more research?
I, I would be in favor of pocket areas, but not just willy-nilly, anything 25 and under, like by the senior center, it makes sense to put it there. I just think that every 25 mile an hour road, I, I agree with what Joel said, the chief, you know, his objective or his concerns with it as well. I mean, those are the same things that we addressed not that many years ago when we did it. If it makes sense for a pocket area, I would be okay, but not just a cart launch.
Can I offer, I've been silent this whole time, but can I offer a suggestion?
No.
And then at the next committee meeting, we're always gonna bring the legislation. And then allow, allow Billy, Chief and myself and Chad to come up with a, like a map, kind of captures, you know, some of the concern areas and we can use that time to discuss, you know, whether or not just do separate pockets or, and I know that Chad and Chief had, Chief mentioned this last time, they put together what roads in the city limits are 35 mile an hour and under and it really captures a great, a large portion of the entire city. So I think just having that map and looking at it and reviewing it and kind of, maybe we do, as you brought up, you know, on Scott Street, Councilman Bear, you know, maybe we isolate a couple of areas. It, you know, I don't know, it's, it's up for discussion. At the next, you know, for the, for that council committee meeting, we'll put together a map and that way it'll just give us kind of a, a springboard for discussion purposes.
I know like my street, which is like a lot of streets, there's parking on one side and it's already treacherous trying to pull out of your driveway and not being able to, you know, if it's an electric golf cart, you're not gonna hear it. And it, especially on my street coming off of La Grange there, you know, it's, it's hard enough to be able to back out of there as it is and make sure everything's seen.
Billy, when you're doing your research, could you also check if it's a similar sized city? city with a similar number?
Yeah, that's something I'd kinda like to know, a similar makeup maybe. I mean, we're gonna have golf carts potentially on the same roads as some of these larger farm vehicles and, you know, semi trucks and, and everything else. So, yeah, maybe it makes a little sense in Putten Bay where they don't have, you know, a grain truck rolling down, rolling down the road. But this is a little different and if we can find something, you know, 8,000-ish peoples, semi, semi rural, then, you know, and see how it works for them.
Yeah, I'd like to see how many people actually-
And who's taking advantage of it.
Right, because we could talk about this and there could be over the next five years, there could be 20 people that take advantage of it and it may not even be noticed too much.
Like Joe said, I think, what's the difference between that and a bicycle? You can't hear a bicycle if they're out on the street either and-
Because you'll have, the difference is, is I think it'd be more than 20 because every one of those golf carts that's parked down at the golf course, guess what, they're gonna be parked at home because they don't have to pay the fee to park down at the golf course and so you've got that many more out there. I mean, it's the same thing as why we got rid of it before.
Yeah, but they probably wouldn't be driving from, I don't know, out by Beckley or something to the golf course.
You know, and then you've got people drinking on the golf course, so, you know, how many are they gonna have that they're gonna take and, you know, drive off from the golf course with it?
Right. Well, and that would be a safety issue, but they're, if they're not riding in their golf cart, they're getting in their car and driving anyway. And I know you're looking out for their safety, but I think people can be responsible for themselves. And I, you know, I ride a bike.
Right.
I ride a bike too and when it's a place that's not, doesn't feel safe, like 108, I don't ride on it. And, and I think if you're in a golf cart and you don't feel like it's a safe place, you just won't drive there.
You're giving people too much credit.
It's a lot of good points and I think, I don't think we're necessarily, I'm not asking certainly to shut any conversation down, I just would like some more information.
And this is exactly why I think the committee felt we needed more information, we needed more input from-
Sure.
Other members of council and thank, we greatly appreciate the Senior Center coming in and, and Citizen Joe out there, whoever you're going by with your, your comments.
My undercover name is Sean.
But that's what we were looking for at, at the committee, I think we just needed more information.
I do have a question for Councilman Myers.
Yes, sir.
I mean, to put you on the spot, but do you know, is that the licensing fee, is it similar to a car or do you remember what the price was when you-
It's a little less, it's probably 35, $40 a year.
Okay. That one Travis mentioned, people that have fees right now at the golf course, I don't know what their annual fee is, but they would have to get their, the golf cart have lights and all the other things on it plus have an annual fee there, it may not even be worth it to them to, to do that, just a thought. Well, we can move this to the Safety and Human Resources Committee.
Send this back, yeah, it's okay with me, sir.
Roxy, can you put that on for August form?
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item K2, discussion of action on feral cats in the city.
All right. Thank you, Council President. A lot of discussion in the past, let's say, several months, I think, we've been, I think a lot of us have been getting individual complaints or concerns about feral cat population or cat colonies and people feeding them. We had a, you know, probably one of the more extreme cases recently at a, a house on, is that Park Street or?
I think it's Park.
Park and Wellsted area, somewhere around there.
Park and Garden.
Garden, Garden, sorry, Garden.
Park and Wellsted don't connect.
Yeah, yeah, correct, yeah, I just couldn't remember if it was on Park or it was on Wellsted. So, that, you know, I mean, we even had first responders going to that, to the location and actually getting, uh, having to decontaminate because they got fleas. So, but the, the committee met, we discussed some of these concerns, you know, what other communities are doing. Billy and I both on our ends have been researching at least what other communities are doing and a lot of communities that I'm seeing are saying, "We don't do anything with cats, it's not our, not our issue." And they're deciding to, you know, you know, give them information, give citizens information and, you know, who they can contact if they have concerns, but there really hasn't been an agency out there that's, that's been, uh, that's, that's really stepped up to be the, the champion of this. On the other hand, we, the committee also discussed the, the current ordinances and what we have and how, um, how they're, they're inadequate to be able to enforce anything to prevent the, you know, the feeding, harboring or otherwise enabling the increase in feral cat populations or cat colonies. So, that said, the committee didn't take any action, wanted to bring it to full council for further discussion and I think Billy, you had mentioned, I guess I turned it over to you to see if you wanted to say anything about it, but you got some potential legislation or at least language that could be talked about and discussed in, in terms of what, what we can do as a city to help curb this.
Sure, I think, and some of the stuff that, that you had found in dealing with, was it the ASPCA or a similar organization?
Uh, we went through Humane Ohio was the, was the main organization that gave us all the information. So, it's, they took a lot of the information from other organizations and kinda compiled it into a, uh, one clearinghouse.
So, there are groups that can assist with this. Certainly we could attempt to draft some sort of language that would allow us to enforce against the harboring or feeding of, you know, stray cats or, well, maybe that's not the proper terminology for this point, but feral cats, there are a number of terms, so. I think what it comes down to, a number of cities have tried a number of things and some of them are trying multiple things. If we choose enforcement, that's gonna require funding, that's gonna require personnel. And if we choose some of these routes suggested by the Humane Society, that's going to require funding as well. So, whichever we choose, if we choose one, we choose the other or both or all five different options, it's gonna require council to, to put, put some money behind this because as staffed now, certainly the police department doesn't have time to, to operate a sting, add a bowl of milk, you know, just kinda binoculars out.
A 22 shell is cheap.
So, our code enforcement guy is not gonna be out there looking for cats. We, we don't have anybody dedicated, I mean, if they trip over something, obviously, if, if the guys out there in the field trip over something, that's an obvious violation, then sure, that's something that they can handle on scene, but I think if, if we're really going to come down hard on, on the enforcement angle, that's gonna require some sort of personnel or funding. If we're going to follow some of these models here that, that Joel helpfully brought, I think there was some significant money to be spent on that as well and so-
Yeah, if I could chime in on that real quick, I just have it up on the screen. To partner with like a Humane Ohio off of Tremainsville Road in Toledo. You know, if, if you look at their rates, you know, 58 cents per mile, $27 per cat trapped gets spayed or neutered and then 1150 per hour of employee time, when you total it, drive time setting the traps, then coming back out, picking them up, taking them to their location, spaying and neutering them, even if they partnered with somebody here locally, I mean, there's gonna be a lot of time invested into it. So, you know, I just put a ballpark estimate on it of, could be up to $150 per cat or $250 per cat under these rates. But, you know, if they can partner with somebody locally to spay and neuter them, that could help cut down the cost on the travel, travel time and everything else. But there's, there's a cost to it. There's a cost to this notion here, let me just pull it back up here, of the, it's TNR, trap, neuter, release. And that's, that's what is recommended, they tip the ears of the cats, they re-release, they capture them, they re-release them at the exact same location where they, where they capture them. So, when you look at this study that was done in, can't remember which city it was in, they've, they've done a few of these studies, but, you know, during an 11-year period, they reduced the cat population from 68 to 23 cats. So, it doesn't happen, doesn't, they don't get rid of the cats overnight. They're re-released in the same location, they're just not breeding and continuing to, to grow in population. So, that's the, that's the, that's the key here when we talk trap, neuter, release.
I'd like to offer up two things. First off, um, so the, the resident in question on this one, so the, the resident that had sent us emails about it, just build a new house and immediately 20 cats are over there urinating in his bushes and on his siding. So, what's he supposed to do? Number two, we've got some kennel laws, why can't we just restrict the number that people can have without a kennel license? And number three, I really say shame on you to the health department because in this instance here, the resident whose property we're talking about was laying in her garage with maggots coming out of a cut in her arm. When they went into the house, there was rotting food, infestation of fleas and waste all over that property and the health department refuses to do anything about it. I say shame on them.
I can, I can address the kennel thing real quick, is that they're, they're outdoor cats? So, you know, whose are they? That's, that's, that's what it comes down to then, you know, the burden of proof is-
Yeah, maybe not so, in, in this specific situation, but we're talking on a, on a broader scale, we're talking about stray cats or feral cats out in the city. As this particular instance, I think we were able to use some nuisance code to, to assist, but-
But this has been a repeat thing at this property?
At that particular property, yeah, but on, on, with that particular example, yes, there, there, there are a number of things that-
But the nuisance thing was specific to other things, wasn't necessarily addressing the cats specifically?
No.
It was, we used nuisance LADA to-
Deal with a number of-
Other issues that were there as well.
Yeah.
There was a multiple.
So, if, if the city were looking to add some language that perhaps to the nuisance code, perhaps back to the animal code that mostly been repealed at this point, you know, certainly there are some, there is some language that I've found so far that I, that I might suggest and I would like an opportunity to look into it further as far as, you know, definitions as to how we're going to, what, what we're going to call certain people who feed these animals. Because it may not, you know, they can claim that this isn't my cat or, you know, but you set up, you set a bowl out for it, you know, again, we get back to the, to the point where if we're gonna charge a crime and I have to present this to a court, I, I'm gonna have to present it beyond a reasonable doubt and so there's gonna need to be some solid evidence passed, there was a bowl in their yard or, you know, and like I said, the guys don't have time to, to stare at a house that may have a bowl in the yard, they trip over a bowl and say, and maybe give a warning and say, "Hey, you can't be feeding cats out here" kinda thing. It's, it's complex, I guess is the best way to put it.
What about when you have the property that takes in, they bent up the screen door, the metal on it so that the cats can get in and out readily?
Sure, and, you know, if, if that's the case and, and I can prove beyond a reasonable doubt to a jury or to the court that that's why the screen door is bent up, if we've got somebody sitting out there for an hour watching cats go in and out, then, but that gets back to my point, we don't have guys available to sit and watch a screen door for cats.
Or even equipment.
Or, yeah.
Cameras on for something like that.
So, certainly we could add some language, I'll summarize, we could add some language in here and I'd be happy to do so. That would make it, because at this point, we're, we're, we're operating on nothing as far as, as the, as the, as the animal code goes.
But we don't, yeah, so we don't even have a chance to even cite anything.
Yeah.
So-
Unless it rises to the nuisance level, you know, where somebody's got a number of huge issues.
Beyond the, yeah, beyond the-
Well, beyond your normal feeding 10 cats outside kinda thing.
I mean, if I was the resident that built the new house and was dealing through this, I'd be more than upset.
Sure.
I guess about it and there's nothing that he can do.
Yeah. I mean, so far, I know, I take defiance as an example, defiance a while back in an attempt to stem some of this and I don't know how successful it's been, but changed some definitions within their code to call a person who may either house the cat or just feed the cat or a keeper in, in quotation marks and went on to define that as a person who exerts or has exerted control over any animal and includes without limitation, temporarily houses, caring for. So, defiance has some good code that might, we might attempt to, to use and I know there are others out there. So, certainly I would be happy to try to draft something that would, that would on paper work very well after, after I draft it and it's on the books, I don't know how that's going to go.
You know, I'm sort of following up on that. I'm not even suggesting that we have the police department go out and-
Sure.
Look for violations on, I mean, I got cats in my neighborhood, as I mentioned in the committee meeting, that come do it in my mosh and I just have to deal with it. But, I mean, if you have, if you have something on the books, I think that would be helpful. And number two, the other situation, like the situation down on Park, it really seems to me that some other agency, other than the city of Napoleon, whether it's the Humane Society or the Health Department, need to be getting involved when that kind of, because I believe those citizens went to the Health Department and even went to the Humane Society. To me, it seems like another agency needs to be getting involved there because I don't feel it's necessar-, yeah, I think we need some kind of ordinance.
Sure.
But I don't think it's the city's job to deal with a house with 20-plus animals in where our personnel are getting infected. I mean, I, I really strongly believe, and I'm not trying to-
I don't disagree.
-tell these other agencies what to do, but I, I think somebody needs to pick up the ball there.
Sure.
It's gonna be a record night because I agree with Dan that-
(laughing)
We don't necessarily have to, I mean, I'm not looking for Gestapo force out there, you know, hunting cats, but I mean, if somebody calls and reports it, something that we can do.
And we have been documenting or, we've been logging and documenting complaints through Amanda at this point, so we're, we're taking in the complaints, you know, just going back to fundamentals, document and communicate. So, if we can document, you know, the, the complaints and if we get something on the books, you know, we can start issuing maybe warning letters and say, "Hey, it's, you know, we received a complaint suspected that, you know, you're, you know, feeding and keeping colonies of feral cats." And if that's the case, then, you know, at least we can start creating that awareness and, and doing some of the education like Mr. Weitzel said earlier, you know, with the golf carts, you know, this is a public education thing too. So, just kind of, you know, it's just important that, you know, they realize what, you know, nuisances and damages that they're creating as a result of, quite frankly, irresponsibly feeding feral cats like that, like, you know, the case in point on Park Street. Now, I've since discovered after all of these discussions, I have two neighbors on my street alone that feed cats regularly. The same instance like you're talking about, bending open the, now, they don't bend open the screen door, but they have a tote with a hole cut out on the front porch with food and, and water and, and they leave the garage door open.
Could they afford for spay and neuter?
Could they afford it?
Mm-hmm. I think they could.
Anthony Wayne Acres, maybe.
I think so. I think so. But the other case, I don't believe that is the case and-
No, no, no.
And I don't think any kind of fine or any kind of punishment for her would have been in order. So, I think there are extremes and there are-
So, what do you tell, you know, Mr. Miller on Garden Street when you say, "Oh, well, that person there?"
Well, let me ask you this because that's been a problem for a lot of years. How many people have complained about her previous to this?
She's had-
They just built the house there.
28 before. Yeah, the, the house was just built this past winter.
I know it was.
There were previous incidents where the city, I think, stepped in and did, I, I wasn't around, so I'm, I'm just speaking from what I've heard, but where the city did step in and I think take a number of cats from that particular residence prior to this last incident, so.
Took, took the cats from the residence?
Yeah.
The Health Department did at that time.
Because, was it the Health Department?
Yeah, she had, there was 28 cats there and the Health Department came in and took all but two or three and the condition was that resident take in, get them spayed and neutered, but the resident did not and since they've, since repopulated.
Sure.
So, what happened to the cats when they were removed?
I'm afraid I don't know.
Because I would think if I had a stray in my yard, I would probably take it to the Humane Society.
And they're not accepting, they said.
Well- Well, they won't accept it at all, and they won't...
That's sort of my point.
That's the other part, is the Humane Society does not accept them.
We could drop them off in Liberty Center.
And they can't, it's because, they can't afford it. But they can't afford it, because then you gotta house them, you gotta feed them, you gotta, you gotta, you know, vet bills.
Right. But what would they have done when they did accept them? Last I knew, they kept them for three days. If they weren't adopted, then, then I would think that your neighbor would be, if he's a humanitarian, he would take care of the problem himself, because he wouldn't want to see that happen to the, to the cats.
And I wasn't necessarily...
But the other...
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, but the other, the other case, no. So, but the cats would just have to be removed. If you have, you can only have five cats in your yard, and if they are a nuisance, and they're not spayed and neutered, then it's at your expense, or the cats have to be removed. I don't know.
I wasn't necessarily suggesting fining them. I'm just suggesting that the Health Department, the Humane Society, someone's gotta get in there and, and...
Well, and I think, I think this one is an extreme.
Right.
But, you know, basically, it's, all these agencies are basically giving her a pass, you know, and that person's not of the mental capacity or of the age where anything's gonna bother them. You can't find that person because they can't pay it. So, you know...
So I don't know what council's opinion is as to some of these topics. As far as legislation adding some prohibition to our, our codes for feeding, harboring feral or stray cats, that's something I can draft, if council's looking for that. I would ask for the opportunity to put something together to bring to the committee, so that the committee can bounce it around a little bit before we bring just the straight ordinance to, to council to look at.
Go ahead, Mr. President. Send that back to my committee.
I just have one...
It's like blubbering not to skip over things.
If, if we were to go with the spay and neuter, and say the city would do it, we charge it back to the resident, you know, if they don't pay it, you know, couldn't, couldn't we put it on...
How do you charge it back to the resident?
Well, if they're, if they're, got the bowl out there and they're feeding it, or they got, you know, whatever, you get it done and you bill it back to the resident.
If there's a feral cat, you put a trap, they'll say, well, that's not the one I'm feeding.
It's, it comes down to proving it, right?
I mean, it comes to...
I still think it's still...
The problem is, if it's $250 a cat, and we take $10,000 and put it at it, it's 40 cats a year. Now, we're denting the problem, we're not solving it. So how many years do we want to spend $10,000 a year to get, to do 40 cats?
But I think if, in my instance, I have a neighbor that has a cat that's let out, and he pees in my bushes, I know exactly what that cat looks like, and I've got pictures of it coming out of their house. So if I'm going to make a complaint about it, I'm gonna have that.
But that's not what we're talking about with the trap neuter release. To me, that's all feral cats. What you're talking about is somebody's pet. So now we got a problem if we're doing...
Well, but if you're, if you're, if you're letting them in, or if it's their pet and they're letting them out, if they're not spayed or neutered, the, the same problem exists. They're gonna get out and reproduce, and, you know, there's gonna be more cats out there.
I really don't want to have a trap neuter and release somebody's pet cat.
A cat is not your pet. You are the cat's pet.
Yeah. (laughing) I'm just gonna take care of the problem with my own methods.
Another issue to consider, I mean, pets are considered personal property in Ohio.
Yeah.
So if we did grab somebody's cat and do something to it...
Right.
Are we on the hook at that point?
Right.
We've altered their personal property in some way? Is that something that, I mean, it's something to consider. There are no easy solutions here, is the summary, I guess I can give.
I, I would add to that. It's probably why a lot of cities just kind of wash their hands of it and say, we don't deal with them.
Every single year...
That's, that's come up in other places that I've...
Every single year on the attorney list serve, municipal attorneys, somebody asks this question, what are you guys doing about feral cats? What are you doing about stray cats? And every single answer comes back, lots of different stuff, is any of it working? Not really. Yeah, that's, it's not, it's not easy. And like Joel showed through some of those numbers, even if we take a, a number of different steps and spend a lot of money on it, maybe we reduce the population by half. It's, it's not, there are no easy answers here.
We're gonna eliminate them, Rob.
On that happy note, we can, we can...
Roxanne, could you add that to the safety and human resource committee? I'd like just to add one thing to that, is, have we talked to the Humane Society here directly about...
Yeah, locally. We were actually pushed to the email Ohio, which eventually got back with us and gave us all of this information.
Okay. In addition to what we're, what Billy's gonna send to the committee, I would think if we could talk to the Humane Society, and if there are some donors to, that want to make donations to the Humane Society here in town, because of knowing there is this issue, obviously, we have a awesome community of people that will donate things like they did for the, the canine unit and some other things. There may be people that really have a passion for cats. They don't want to see them being injured or other things, and maybe they'll donate some money to the Humane Society, and they can kind of work with the city and help us with this. All right. Moving on to item K3, discussion or action to direct law director to draft legislation for ODOT to perform annual bridge inspection for the city of Napoleon.
Okay, thank you. As you had in your packet, it's just a, ODOT, they coordinate all annual big, bridge inspections, and they require legislation to allow them to work in the city limits, similar to the legislation that was requested previously.
Is that what's going on in the bridge right now?
Uh, bridge, no, no, that's the water line thing, your replacement.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I have a motion to direct the law director to draft legislation.
So move.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie?
Yes.
Justy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeff Alm?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to item K4, discussion or action to direct the law director to draft legislation to allow the city to apply for issue two funds for 2020.
Thank you, Council President. This is, I'm gonna request that EU direct law director drafts legislation. This allows us to apply for grants, and what we're, we're looking at some, a couple of projects right now, but we will, we'll be requesting suspension on this legislation when it comes back next Monday. This'll help us expedite the application process so that we can get something in when the due date comes around.
We're on ODOT's timeline, not our own, on a lot of these.
Could I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie?
Yes.
Justy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeff Alm?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Okay, item K5, direct the law director to draft legislation to appropriate funds for pool design.
Okay, thank you, Council President. As we discussed in previous meetings, for the pool design, the funds that we're currently using, were deposited, but were not appropriated, so we needed legislation to appropriate those funds. Also, we'll be requesting suspension on that as well. We'll more than likely be coming back at the next meeting with a approval of a contract for design. Thank you. Have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie?
Yes.
Justy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeff Alm?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Okay, before I read the next one, can the law department handle it? Or we should throw in a bunch at you?
I think we can get it. Yeah, thanks.
All right. K6 is direct law director to draft legislation to appropriate funds to the Ohio Water and Sewer Rotary Commission.
Thank you, Council President. This is an item in your packet. There's a, an explanation here, but the city was able to secure funds several years ago to, from the Ohio Water and Sewer Rotary Commission to develop infrastructure in the city. As these properties, they can defer their assessments. As these properties change hands, those assessments come due, and we've had several properties change hands in the total amount of approximately $41,000. I also spoke with another landowner today. He's working out a deal to sell two more pieces of property. We may have more come in later. Don't know when that's gonna happen, but at least for now, we're looking to appropriate the funds. We've already collected these funds. All we need to do is appropriate and then pay back the Ohio Rotary Commission. Long story short.
Thank you for that. Hey, could I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie?
Yes.
Justy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeff Alm?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Okay, item K7, discussion or action on the 2020 annual resurfacing project, referring to the committee. I refer that to the municipal properties...
Yep.
Committee for next meeting, which is next Monday?
It's next Monday. I, I will not be there.
Okay.
So that's up to the rest of the committee if they want to...
You don't transfer it to safety and human...
(laughing) What a great idea.
Are there any other meetings that you know of that have been canceled or...
Electric will be canceling. We just have billing determinants, and the city manager won't be here.
Councilman Commodore, we'll, we'll have something for September. We won't have anything for the August meeting for water and sewer.
Good. Water sewers canceled then, also.
So if this is the only thing on the agenda, we can, can we wait till September, or...
Yeah, that's, it's up to you, up to you. That's however you want to handle it.
It's not gonna affect anything.
I would say wait until, please.
Okay. You put that on September. Thank you.
Go see the steer show. Go see the steer show. Steer show, I think I've got a better one.
Is that always that day?
Get yourself an hamburger.
(laughing)
Okay, moving on to item K8, discussion or action, accepting donation to the canine unit.
Okay, we got another $2,000.
All right.
So we're, keep adding to it. Wow. Pretty impressive.
All right. Could I have a motion to accept this donation?
So move.
Second.
Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie?
Yes.
Justy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeff Alm?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
All right. We'll go around the table here. And Kelly, you've been quiet for a long time. We'll start with you.
We received an invoice from the state of Ohio for the J-Rig grant. We trued up. We spent $42,310.96, and the revenue was $42,712. So we owe them $401.04. And then we need another $10.98 to cancel the account for the appropriation. So we needed a supplemental of $412.02. We need to pay them 30 days from the letter, that was July 18th. So we would need to do it, and then bring it on for the third quarter adjustments, if that's okay with you.
All right. We need to, do we need a motion to do that, or?
No, we can make, we can make those adjustments, and, and you'll just see it in the third quarter budget adjustment.
Okay, great. Anything else in all those days and hours you've spent here with us so far?
No, not yet.
Okay, great. Welcome again.
Thank you.
Hey, Laurie?
Just wanted to welcome Kelly. It's very nice to have you here.
Thank you.
And I got to speak with Chief O'Brien in the parking lot, congratulate him on the airboat rescue at Waterville, but I just want to say it again, because that was very cool and very well done. So congratulations.
Thank you.
That's all for me.
Thank you.
Councilman Commodore was quiet tonight.
Whoa, all right. My turn?
It is.
Okay. Chief O'Brien, I'm gonna pick on you a little bit here, too.
Yeah.
And from what I understand from some of my connections, you did a great job working for the high school football team.
And, yeah, we did, yep. We had a really good time. Coach Sori had reached out to us, and we've been working on this for probably a year now. It was a little too late last year, but we wanted to, just at the eve of the two-a-days, put the boys through what a firefighter does on a regular basis. The cool part is, is I had a senior, I don't know if he's on the football team or not, but he did fill out an application today. So that is the whole point there, is hopefully we'll get a little bit of recruitment. They see what we go through, and it kind of breaks up the monotony for them as, at the, you know, football practice. So it was a lot of fun. I think it was more rewarding for us than it was probably for them, but it was, it was really a lot of fun.
Now, thank you for that.
Yep.
And that's all. Well, I'll keep picking on Chief. Come on up here to the podium, please. I want to make sure that you're heard.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, sorry.
I did talk to Chief O'Brien also about the, the rescue that they did in Waterville, and, and it took me back to the budget meetings when we were talking about your requesting that we get a, an airboat for rescues, and how the other piece of equipment we had wasn't really working, and wasn't safe to your, your men. Just wanted to hear the story a little bit and elaborate on why that was so important that we got that boat.
Okay. Well, it would have been on Friday. I don't remember the exact date, but about a week or so ago, Friday, maybe 1:00 in the morning is when we got the request. This would have been about two hours after Waterville and Monclova had been on the river. So they were in the same location that we had taken the hovercraft in, in the previous rescue. And so it's just, just to the west side of the bridge down, I don't know, it's in between Missionary Island and whatever bridge that is in Waterville. What is it?
The old Roach and Moose Bridge.
Okay. So right there, it's really rocky. That was the exact same place that we had taken the hovercraft last time. Well, what happened is, is a pontoon boat with three, three boys on it, and the, and the 20s is what they were. They had, the current had taken over their pontoon boat, and they kind of got sideways, and then they got stuck and hung up on the rocks. Well, Waterville got called at 11:30. Waterville's boat is a connector boat that will connect to, I think, Waterville Mall me and Monclova have these similar types of boats that'll connect together. Waterville's is a jet-driven boat, and Monclova's is a prop-driven boat. Waterville got on scene, they got up to the pontoon, they got two of the guys off of it onto their boat, and they dropped one of their rescuers onto the pontoon boat. When that happened, they tried to go back upstream where they could drop them off at the dock, or even on the side land, because it's right across from this little park area. And the current was then too much for them. And so it started taking over the Waterville boat, and the Waterville boat started going downstream, and then they got hung up on the rocks. So when Monclova could only get to the island, they couldn't go any farther. They already knew that it was just too shallow for that area. So they had called us to bring the airboat. We had dropped the airboat in at the dock. And the best part, like I told Laurie in the parking lot, the best part was that I was on land. So I, it didn't matter if I was there or not, they, the guys are the ones that handled it. So they, we dropped the boat in, they flew it down, passed the island, went to the pontoon boat first. They picked up the Waterville rescuer, and they also picked up the other civilian on there, turned the boat around, took them back to the dock, dropped them off, came back, and then they went to the Waterville boat. Now, Waterville, since it's 1:00 in the morning, it's probably 2:30 in the morning now, it's real dark out there. I mean, you can't see anything. The, the airboat does have two LED lights, spotlights on the sides, and then they have, we had put our own emergency light on it that has two white beam lights in it. So it did light up a little bit of the area, but not to really see the definition of like, you know, they were saying it was a six-inch waterfall, or a bunch of rocks in that, in that area. So they were really concerned about us taking the airboat down in there. During all those training and things like that, everybody said that as long as we got to the rocks, which they did over there at the pontoons, that is, you just, don't hit it full, full go. Get to it and then power up over it. And so that's what they, that's what they were doing. But when we got up to the Waterville boat, what they did is they came up to like this little grass area, and then they just stopped right there. And then they walked, the, the rescuer walked a tagline to that Waterville boat. And it was about ankle-high water, and then they brought those other two back to the airboat, and then they were able to take them back to the dock. After that, and there was enough weight off there, then the Waterville guys, I did talk to Chief, which is Monclova's fire chief that was there in command at the time. And we will be setting up a training so we can train in that area in daylight. We've been down there three times. But the best part about this time is that when we come back, we're still in service for any water rescue. Every time that we went before, the two times that I flew the hovercraft before, we came back, we had to replace all the airbags. We had a hole in it, you know, it was always, we were out of service for multiple months or weeks after the time that we came back because the hovercraft just wasn't built for it. This time we come back and it's just really, you know, fueling it back up and putting everything back in service and it's ready to go. We did experience and we had planned for those water rescue suits in the budget. So we just did, we're going through the measuring of a few of the individuals right now to get those ordered. That was about the only thing during our post-incident analysis stating that we need to have the dry suit rather than the ice-water rescue suit that we have. The ice-water rescue suit that we have is great, but you don't have any of the dexterity. You can't use any of the things. So moving this way, we'll be able to have a separate glove that you can take off and so on, so forth. So we are gonna be getting those ordered this week, but we had planned for that this year too. So I, I am very, very happy with the way that it went. Everybody's safe, everybody got home, and I think that's the most important. So I think we got back in service about 4:15 in the morning.
Chief, how much did it cost each time the hovercraft went out, on average?
So, on average, we would pay the insurance. Well, whatever, we would claim an insurance claim. And so we'd have to pay the $1,000 deductible. And then depending on it was, you know, however much damage. The one time was more than the other, but you can't buy one or two bags. You'd have to buy all the bags. And I think that those are about $1,000 when you'd buy all the bags around. And then I know that, oh, on Front Street, he was the one that did the fiberglass work on it. And I think that, if I remember, that was a $1,500 or so.
Your Walters?
Yeah, Walters. That's who it was, Walters. Yep. So that was really the, the.
So I mean, it was just not only that it was out of service, but, you know, the cost of every time you use it.
Correct. Every time we use it, then it costs us money, you know, as well. Yep. And it was very unsafe. In this case, I mean, it was the most controlled rescue that I've ever seen down there. And, and now that's what they're all talking about. We need to have an airboat. And because they, they understand that in the fluctuations of the river. So we may not be as shallow in our area as what they are down there, but we have a lot of debris in our river. And I think that's the biggest thing. If we get up to a log, it doesn't matter. We can go right over it. And we're not, we are not using the same type of equipment that what they're using that they had an issue with. And so the other cool part is too, with the hovercraft, we were maxed out with maybe three people on it by the amount of power you would have. And with the, with the airboat, I think they had one, two, well, they had the two that they got off the pontoon and they had three on there. So they had five on there at one time when they were going back to the dock and they didn't have an issue with it. So, yeah. Well, thanks, Joe. I appreciate you letting me share that story with everybody. And, you know, it did, really did pay off. So.
I'm glad to hear that and I'm glad it worked well and hopefully other cities can, can do that as well.
Yeah.
Just from your experience. So, thank you and thank your team for us.
All right, thanks. Will do.
The only other thing I have, I think, is on Facebook where if you're somebody's birthday today, Jeff Myers, happy birthday.
Thank you.
Brian, did you wanna start singing?
I will pass.
Mr. Mayor?
I was talking with somebody from the Henry County Water Sewer District that gets their utility bill from us. And he said, "Boy, my water bill is really high." So I did some investigation and his water bill is high. Some of it is because of the assessment from the Henry County Water Sewer District. And so I was wondering if we could put it on discussion action for two weeks, since the water committee's not gonna meet. If we could have on there just a, looking at, maybe changing the bill for those, for those customers to reflect, here's the Napoleon water charge, here's the Henry County Water Sewer District charge, and see what it looked like. It's not gonna affect everybody in the district, but I think it'd be neat to be able to show that so people can go, "Oh, it's not just the City of Napoleon charging us this water."
Right.
There's also a charge because of the Henry County Water Sewer District.
We did a calculation using a Liberty Center bill. We didn't get everybody's bill, but we'll work on getting everybody else's bill. I talked to Laurie about it today. She's back from vacation as of today. So, but we did a quick calculation. Everybody's, how they bill their water and sewers is different. So we'll, we'll have to get individual bills, try to, you know, use our best average, six units, is kinda how we.
I mean, we just did one big bill Liberty Center, right? So with how they do it, it's on that.
Just one bill in Liberty Center.
But there's some individual residences that have a City of Napoleon utility bill. But on that utility bill, it says water, but they're also paying a Henry County Water Sewer District assessment or something. So those are the ones they're gonna focus on, the ones that we, we send locally, the ones I wanna see to break that out.
Gotcha. Okay. Yeah, I got you.
So you maybe have one heavily redacted, all personal information, show, show what it looks like now, potential for the same bill just in the future, if we can show that, that assessment that they have. So if we put that on discussion action for two weeks. I know the pool's gonna close pretty soon. Are we gonna take any ceremonial water out of it so that in two years, we have the opening for the new pool, we can dump in some old water and say we're still old and new and?
I don't know if we're gonna dump the old in and have some bad.
So if it's, if it's green, we don't dump it in, understand?
With the leaks in the pool. We have experts that can treat water too, so.
With the, with the leaks in the pool, we could take in, the stuff that we pull out of there would be like new water because of.
Right.
Just if we can make some kind of tie-in before we, before bulldoze this one, have something that we can pull the new one.
That's a good thought.
I got talked to, and that's the right way to say it, I got talked to, by a couple of business owners whose, their property backs into the Main Street parking lot. And there was some construction done on their Main Street parking lot. But they're not sure how it got done, why it got done.
Were those the two utility cutouts?
Yeah.
The two utility cutouts, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, those were, those were contracted, not by us. Those were either private property owners.
Okay, 'cause there's still some debris from the one that the property owner liked to remove.
Okay. Yeah, look into it.
Okay.
Got it.
And that one, I'm not sure is tarred with street tar. It almost looks like roof tar to me 'cause it's still wet a week plus later. So, not quite great.
Good.
Welcome, Kelly.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
When she's late on Monday nights, it's not 'cause she's out, it's 'cause she's here with us. So.
Well, that was her excuse.
And obviously, the Henry County Fair is, is this week, starts this week. Moving day's Wednesday and then it's Thursday to Thursday. So eat and enjoy. Safe. So, go ahead. Thank you.
Travis? What day are you cooking out at the Huntington Barn? Or doesn't Huntington usually cook at the Beef Barn? Just wanna make sure I avoid it for the heat contest.
I know of.
Okay. Welcome, Kelly.
The only other thing I have is, as we're getting closer to the water contracts ending for the satellites, if they do not renew, we're gonna see some rates go up inside the city. And I think we owe it to our residents to investigate a paper township. And basically what that would do is that would take the corporation limits of the City of Napoleon and remove that from all of the other townships. And so basically, like right now, I live in Napoleon Township. Through my property taxes, I pay money to Napoleon Township to plow township roads. Pat always used the example that, you know, he lives inside of Harrison Township in the city. He pays for, you know, fire contracts. He pays it through his, his income tax as well as his, you know, the fee from, from the township. That would give us, by taking and putting in that paper township, that would give some relief back to those residents and businesses that would otherwise be affected, you know, by having to raise those rates. The only, the losers obviously would be the townships, but if, you know, Liberty Center or any of these other satellites leave, my priority isn't the townships outside. My priority is to those citizens whose now rates are going to be, you know, potentially raised. So I think as we go down that path, I think we ought to, you know, if that comes out to be a reality, you know, I think we need to take a look at that and also, you know, put all those areas on notice that this is something that we are going to look at.
Is that something that we can do or does that have to be voted on?
It's what we do. The way we have it set up now is we are the exception rather than the rule.
Okay. Can we give us a chance to take a look into that?
Yep, absolutely. I'm just throwing it out to, you know, get it at least on people's minds. That's all I have.
Thank you, Travis. Jeff, birthday.
Thank you.
29.
Close. It ends with a nine, yes. Welcome to you, Kelly.
Thank you. Happy birthday.
Looking forward to working with you. So, kudos to the fire department as well, what has already been said. So kudos to what you did in Waterville there. Another question I have is, if you're in the parking lot out here, you may have seen there's a, speaking of debris in the river, you may see a log. Is that still on the river bridge? Do you know, on the pier? Who's responsible to get that removed?
Is that the county engineers?
Oh, is it? Maybe they're not aware of it. I'm not sure.
Up to take a look. They may get all the remnants of ditches, but I don't know if they handle debris in the river.
Okay. It just looks ugly. You look out there and, you know what I'm talking about? Have you seen it? Okay. Is it still there?
I don't know if it's still there.
I haven't looked for about a week, but, okay.
A lot of times what you'll find is regular motors will go by. There's always debris on those piers. They'll go by and then they'll release them and then they start going down more.
Okay. I know it wasn't our job, but I figured it was somebody's job. So.
Yeah.
Thank you for everyone. My wife was in the hospital, in Toledo Hospital, for 10 days. I just wanna say thanks for the texts and the cards and meals and phone calls. So thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Bless you.
That's all I have.
Ken?
Welcome, Kelly.
Thank you.
And I have nothing else.
Welcome to Kelly.
Same thing.
Welcome to Kelly.
Thanks, Joel.
Hey, wait, wait. Yeah, so we already talked, we'll have a wastewater treatment plan update at the September Water and Sewer Committee. The OMEA nomination is in, it's been received. So Travis is the nomination. That's, I don't think we have to do anything special at this point for the OMEA round. And then contract negotiations for fire and asthma will be starting along with the budget. So welcome again, Kelly.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Did you get the OMEA dues bill?
Uh, I don't know. I don't know if we got that yet.
I got a copy and it said it was sent to you, but I was CC'd on it. So I was just.
Usually it actually just bypasses, goes right, goes right to the finance department.
I'll check and let you know.
If you got a copy of it, more likely it's, it's already been addressed to the finance department.
Okay, moving on and skipping over L, executive sessions. That's the first time in my history here. Move on to M, approve payments of bills and approve financial reports. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the payment of bills and financial reports shall stand approved. Hearing none, stand approved. Could I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Hey Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie?
Yes.
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeff Al?
Yes.
Ken?